All right, so, ground rules, no personal attacks. I will interrupt you if you start rambling and as a last resort, we have the mics being able to be cut. Donna here will, we have the timer. Every question is, each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to the question. There are several rapid-fire questions, which will be about 20 seconds apiece, so we ask that you just keep moving along. At 30 seconds, the yellow card will go up, right there, gotta watch. And then at 60 seconds, the red card will go up and finish your sentence. If not, they cut the mic. So, all the que, so there's 26 questions or so. Not every candidate will answer every question, but the candidates that are answering each question have been randomly assigned completely through a computer. So, and every candidate has the same number of questions to answer, so all should be equal. I think that is it. Any questions? Good to go? All right. Oh, and the last question is a closing statement, so everyone will get a chance to have a closing statement. So we will jump right in. Just so happens to be Mr. Baker, right at the beginning, randomly assigned. First question, what are the biggest concerns being expressed by Washington County residents?
Well, good morning, everyone. Thank, thanks to everyone for attending here this morning. There's many, many concerns out there. When I'm out in the public, a lot of people, they talk to me about taxes. They're concerned about their taxes remaining consistent and also hear a lot of comments on education. They value our educational institutions here in Washington County. They want to make sure that our public schools are contributed to at a responsible level. And I always tell them that I do my best to fund education at the best possible level that I have the ability to. So they're just a couple of the things that I hear when I'm out among the public.
Thank you. Mr. Beal, same question.
Hello, there, everybody. For me, from what I hear on the doorstep, when I go door-to-door, it's economic development, public safety and education. The current status quo, as I would call it, is not acceptable to me and not acceptable to a lot of people. We need to have a new format of looking at certain things, certainly the economic development with the newly redesigned EDC. We're gonna have to see if that works. For me, public safety's important. I'm a 911 dispatcher, I'm really in tune with that type of thing. My wife's a teacher at Springfield Middle, so making sure that it's all three that can be combined together to have a successful community workforce and all of the above that goes along with that. So that's my, my top three.
Thank you. Mr. McKinley. Same question.
I had a very unique opportunity to find out what was on the public's mind when I did my signatures. I went door-to-door to many hundreds of doors. One of the most popular complaints was the pothole in front of my house. I heard, heard that a lot. But beyond that, the concerns of the citizens were pretty much the concerns of most county commissioners. They talked about education. Some believe that education's funded very well, others believe that it needed a shot in the arm. Infrastructure was a concern, again, back to the potholes and the roads and the building conditions and roofs and so forth and so on. And the other was public safety. School safety is primary on the minds of many people in our community, as is the opioid crisis. So those are the things that I heard, and I heard it loud and clear, and as a commissioner, I'm pretty, or as a potential commissioner, I am pretty much in agreement with the community with those concerns.
Thank you. So moving to the second question, are we getting, getting the hang of this yet? Number two, when citizens think an issue is important and you think differently, how do you govern? Mr. Kiefer.
Obviously, we have five commissioners for a reason, because there's many different viewpoints out there. If everyone had the same viewpoint, we would just elect one commissioner and call him a dictator, whatever you want. But there's a reason that we have five commissioners, so we can have multiple viewpoints. Not every issue is agreed upon by the community 100 percent. I've gone to citizens' homes if they've asked me to, if they wanted to sit down and talk to me about an issue, or they have a concern that's taken place in their neighborhood. And I don't always necessarily vote the way that that citizen may want or may expect me to, but I think you need to get out and talk to someone, sit down with them. It might be at their home, it might be for lunch, it might just be a quick stop in your office to talk to them. So communication is key, sitting down, listening to their concerns, that way you can have all the information that you need to make the best possible decision.
Thank you. Ms. Paul.
Sure. So, as an elected official, your role isn't to represent yourself, it's to represent the citizens. So the priorities really should be set by the citizens. And I think making sure we have appropriate forums for people to express those concerns is really important. I'd like to see county commissioner meetings move to the evening, when I think more working people would be able to come, rather than mid-morning, which is hard for most of us. And I think making sure that commissioners are out and about and hearing directly from people is how this helps set the priorities. As a candidate, I try to let people know what I think is important. For example, helping our struggling fire and rescue system, certainly education, doing everything we can to help deal with addictions, which are devastating many in our, our population. So that's how I would approach it.
Thank you. Mr. Meinelschmidt.
I think that every, every citizen's opinion is important, it's not just my opinion. So I don't think there's a time that I would ever say, you know, ever, ever mention that somebody's personal opinion as a citizen of Washington County's opinion's not important. That's going back to what Elizabeth here was saying, is that you're representing everybody in the county, and I want to make sure that everyone is represented properly and their, their opinions, their priorities are brought to the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Third question, there will be times when commissioners will have differing opinions on how to address a problem or issue, provide a specific example or strategy, when you have worked through a disagreement with others. What was the issue and how was it resolved? Ms. Brightman.
So I think what we're talking about here is the ability to compromise and to collaborate, something that I believe nationally and locally has sort of become a bad word. The idea of just making, getting those three votes and not worrying about number four and number five. The whole idea of working in a closed session with only a few of the commissioners there becomes problematic. I think it gives the perception of a government that isn't about the people, it's more about individuals and their, their issues rather than the people's agenda. So there's certainly a lot of good models out there, and I would like to see this county government go back in that direction.
Thank you. Mr. Klein.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Donna. No matter the outcome of the vote, or which side you're on, you're elected by the people to make Washington County a success. I've learned from my two terms as a commissioner, even though you're on the losing side of the vote, it is your obligation, your oath to the people of Washington County to make that project or event a success. And I still will continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Forrest. Randomly assigned right down the middle.
Thank you. You know, it's, as a specific example, I would have to point to redistricting when I served on the school board. In regards to that, it's important that you not only hear out your colleagues and hear out stakeholders on issues. At the end of the day, you have to make that decision based on all the feedback you hear. You may walk into a discussion and have a different opinion, but after hearing from people who it actually affects, that would often shape my vote at the end of the day. So with that, it would be civility and respect, open and transparent discussion. There should never be any kind of decisions be made behind closed doors. You know, it just should be open and transparent, there should be work sessions that do away with the perception that decisions are made in advance.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner.
I think it's always, it's, I started this with common sense and communication. You can't, you have to have that, and my job as a realtor, I negotiate, mediate and communicate with thousands of people a year. I think you have to have that skill. I think it all has to be, the bottom line, it has to be for the best interest of the citizens of Washington County, I think, period. There's no exception to that. And I think it's just, it's just one of those things where you have to have that skillset to be able to get along with people and communicate with people, or it's not gonna work for you.
Thank you. So the, the next several questions are based off of the pre-form responses that we received from 70 percent of you. So we will start with Ms. Paul. Paraphrasing your response, let me read the question, my apologies. The first question was, no, I'm gonna read the question, never mind. Paraphrasing your response, a county commissioner's most important responsibilities include ethical, fair, thoughtful and courageous leadership for the county, and as the face of the county, not just locally, but around the state and beyond, they should conduct themselves in ways that reflect positively on our county. What experience or skillset do you possess to fulfill those responsibilities?
I started out after college, working in politics on Capitol Hill, and I've also worked for a major nonprofit, the Getty. But for the last 21-plus years, I worked in middle school, which takes a lot of skills that I think are transferable to politics. You can't be easily flustered. You deal with a lot of different personalities, the students, the parents, colleagues, administrators and so forth. So I think the skills of communication that have been mentioned, being able to work with people, to find solutions are all important. Being transparent, trying to be open to different ideas that may not initially seem like they jive with yours, but trying to find solutions that work for all the stakeholders are important.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner.
I'm gonna sort of repeat a little bit of, oh, new question?
It's, it's specific. Sorry. So paraphrasing your response, a county commissioner should diligently pursue economic development opportunities and state incentives, manage and oversee countywide fire and EMS readiness, and appoint strong county staff leadership. What experience or skillset do you possess to fulfill those responsibilities?
Well, I've operated two businesses in Washington County, both very successful. The current business being as humble as I can, has a volume of 15 to 20 million a year. I have a staff, so I have that skillset to know what business is all about. I contribute my fair share of taxes, and it goes on and on. But with that, with that being said, I think that the bottom line is business. I mean, that's where it all starts. We can talk about everything in the whole world, but if it's not, if we don't have business and a good tax base, I mean, we're sort of sunk, nobody's gonna get any money. So that's, that's my first priority, to make sure we have a strong operating EDC and on and on and on. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the, the next pre-form question. First, Ms. Brightman. In your, the question was, in your opinion, what is the value of workforce development programs and initiatives? What would you propose to, or otherwise support to strengthen Washington County's workforce? You mentioned the disparate and often competing individuals and private, public and nonprofit entities, all with their own plans, deals and understanding of and for workforce economic development. How do you propose, as a commissioner, aligning the efforts for maximum effect?
So those questions came out prior to the rollout of the Economic Development Coalition, which actually incorporated some of the elements in my answer there. So I think we're actually heading in that direction, and I think that's an important direction. There's certainly a lot of details before we have a sense of what this coalition will bring forward, we need accountability. Anytime you have a public-private partnership with public dollars involved, you certainly need to have a degree of accountability, so that at the end of the day, your elected officials are the ones that are going to be held accountable. So they need to have a, a key position on that, that coalition. But again, we've spent a lot of years in this county putting EDC, different structures together, and none of them seem to be sustainable. And I would say what we're missing is leadership and vision.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, how do you specifically propose to supplement and coordinate with HCC, the Washington County Technical High School and private, private trade schools, as you mentioned, to support workforce development?
One of the things I've learned as a commissioner, with many of the tours of Washington County Technical High School and in my own life, HCC, as I know it as HJC, has played an intricate role in my career development, as known as a commissioner, but in my role as a real estate agent, a realtor and all the continued education classes. VOTAC, as I used to call it in high school, Technical High, and HCC has been ahead of the curve, planning career opportunities for very many vocations. It's always about additional funding. One of my suggestions is that maybe we need another technical high school, maybe we need a ninth and 10th grade technical high school. As I spoke to many of the teachers out there, they're turning away hundreds of students per class. And in today's world, with college debt being insurmountable, a burden upon people, having HCC and our Board of Education develop these programs for trades, and with additional funding, will be an asset to the community.
Thank you. Mr. Forrest, you proposed, you proposed the creation and appointment of an independent economic development commissioner as a critically important step. What tools would you bestow on this individual to empower them to be successful?
So I think it would be important to take some of the bureaucracy out of economic development, certainly that leader and leadership would be critical to that, but they also need to have some independence and an ability to reach out and grow business and support businesses who exist here. I think the perfect example, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, but what's taking place in Franklin County. You can go on their website, Joe Ross is the, the person who's leading that, you can see every available tool that's available for economic development in Franklin County, where the money is, what money is available and who all the players are, which is a pretty big contrast to what we currently have here. So I think it would be important to have someone with some ability of autonomy, who can make bold decisions, but still be held accountable at the same time.
Thank you. The next question was, identify, identify two educational strengths and two educational challenges in Washington County. Mr. Meinelschmidt, you stated our educational staff and diverse learning opportunities are our greatest strengths. Population growth and limited funding are mentioned as challenges to maintaining these strengths. What is your strategy to reconcile these? In 60 seconds.
Well, that, that's easy, right? Well, the, talking about the strengths, when we have the different magnet programs, I think that's a huge strength that we have, but of course, having those become a weakness because they cause extra expenses and what Commissioner Klein was talking about with VOTAC. VOTAC or Tech High has become a magnet program. It's a tremendously successful program, but again, we're turning away hundreds of students that want to go there, that, you know, should have those opportunities. So it comes down to budgeting. And population growth, as I said, that's, that's a strain on our system, because we have more kids, the more money we're spending, and where do we get this money? So when we look at our budget, our budget has grown over the last four years, but we have not, the amount of revenue that it has grown, which I think, I did the numbers, I think is a little over 12 percent over the last four years, but education has not met that 12 percent increase. So we have to make sure it is properly funded, and what are our priorities, and we have to make education one of those priorities.
Thank you. Mr. McKinley.
Yes, sir.
Staff and facilities are mentioned as our strengths, and increasing percentages of children with learning disabilities and lack of kindergarten readiness are listed as our biggest challenges. How do you plan on meeting these challenges with existing resources, as there is limited opportunity for funding increases?
Well, you know, first of all, meeting those challenges somewhat comes under the auspices of the elected Board of Education. But if I were asked to help, I would talk about possibly a reorganization within the Board of Education. We have kids with fetal alcohol syndrome, kids coming into school with fetal drug syndrome, and they're, they're very difficult to teach, and they're difficult to bring where we want them to be. To me, solutions would be smaller classes, which means more teachers, which means more money, or either that or a reorganization of the money. So I would work, I would work diligently, trying to find a way to deal with these kids. The other thing that really distresses me is the fact that Washington County students enter school less ready for education, less ready to learn, than kids in the other parts of the state. Now we're getting into parenting. How do we deal with parenting? We, we've got to reach out to the community, maybe parents need to go to school. You know, to catch a carp in the Potomac River, all it needs is a license and a rulebook. But to raise a kid, my most important duty I'll ever have, I don't have to do anything. Maybe we've reached a time where we need to help these parents.
Thank you. The next question, first will be Mr. Wagner. Washington County is becoming increasingly diverse. In what ways have you experienced this change in demographics, and how do you plan to represent these diverse constituents?
Well, we have a strong zoning, so I don't think, I think we're doing a real good job with the zoning commission. To meet it, I think it, we're going back to, most of these are families moving in, or we're going back to education again. I think we have to laser focus on the education and be prepared to be able to serve the diverse communities that are coming into the area. Again, we're going back to the school board, pioneer that, but I'm sure there's gonna be times when we're asked to help. But yeah, I think it's, it has to be a stronger education, you know, I think we're doing good in the education field, actually. I think we need to, it, back to parenting, and I think we have to address the parenting issue of it, and I'm not sure how to do that. Home visits is a good start. They're doing home visits in the school system now. Taking books to the homes, I think that's, that's a huge benefit, if we could step that up a little bit, maybe.
Thank you. Mr. Beal. Same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
If you would.
Washington County is becoming increasingly diverse. In what ways have you experienced this change in demographics, and how do you plan to represent these diverse constituents?
Well, for me personally, working in 911 communications, you know, we deal with all types of events and incidents throughout the county. My wife is a schoolteacher, she has to deal with people who come into the school system, some of them don't speak English very well. So it does go back to education, as was, was mentioned. Having more instructional aids in the school, having more people, personnel workers in the school, more guidance counselors to assist in getting a handle on the problems before it becomes a major issue. So it does come down to money, it comes down to working well with the Board of Education. That needs to happen much better, I think, than it's had in the last four years. So me as a team player with the Board of Education, with my fellow commissioners, if I'm fortunate enough to be elected, we all have to work together to solve the changing demographics of the county, because we're gonna be above 160,000 people within 10 years, and we'll be around 200,000 by the middle of the century. So solving these problems now will help us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kiefer. There you are.
Thank you. I'm very happy that that question was asked of me. This summer, we reconstituted or created three new county boards, and one of those boards was a diversity committee. And that came after suggestion of two citizens that approached the commissioners, so I won't take credit for that decision, but Mrs. Miller, Miss Zuni Miller and Mr. Arthur Hicks suggested that we form a diversity committee, and we did that. And we were able to appoint, just last month, seven members to that diversity committee. They've been sworn in, and last week, we had our first meeting. I'll serve so long as I'm a commissioner, I suppose, at least until November, as the commissioner liaison to that diversity committee. And their charges are many, it's, it's up to the committee to help decide and offer suggestions to the commissioners, but will help us to make sure that our employment practices are taken to account the diversity of our community. That was one of the requests that the commissioners had personally of that committee. So I think we are addressing that issue. It is a need in our community to recognize that we do have a diverse population, and I think with our diversity committee, we'll be prepared for that.
Thank you. So the next question is a rapid-fire question, everyone will get a chance to answer, 20 seconds, so that's like a yes and no in a sentence. So we'll give it a shot, I'm just gonna go from left to right. The question is, how many hours per week do you either put into the job of county commissioner incumbents, or how many hours do you think you need to put into the job opponents? So Mr. Baker.
Well, that, that is a great question, but it's easy, some weeks you may put in 10, 20 hours, some weeks you may put in 30, 40 hours. It just depends, and it's all hours of day. We get calls and emails, all hours of, you know, out of the 24 hours, it's just, I mean, just, it's unbelievable, the number of emails and questions you get from the citizens, so you do your best to answer them.
Thank you. Mr. Beal.
I would be available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Thank you.
Ms. Brightman.
It really needs to be a full-time job, and we haven't seen that in the past four years, and I think we need to go back there.
I put in a full-time schedule as well, from answering emails to going out to the constituents, did this surrounding my real estate career and caring for my mom, who three years approaching passed away with Alzheimer's. If anyone ever had senior care, trying to balance that, but easily 30-plus hours a week.
Thank you. Mr. Forrest.
I intend to work full-time at the job I've had for 24 years, but I will be available to do the job, I can assure you of that. I think we've gotten away from the concept of a citizen legislature, where people become full-time politicians and kind of lose track with what it's like to get up and go to work every day and meet the demands that are out there. So I'll be available and I'll get the job done.
Thank you. Mr. Kiefer.
I think it does vary week to week. It is an on-call position, you never know when you might get a phone call or the knock at your home door with a citizen that has a concern. My day yesterday started with being at the county office, building at 8:30 for a meeting. I got home after dark, after I met with a business that needed some assistance, so...
Thank you.
Okay, I would, I would add that it is a full-time job, but it does vary from week to week. I would add this also, that 20 quality hours is a lot more important than 30 hours. And, you know, the degree to which we work hard is the most important thing, I think more so than hours, I'll do.
Thank you.
I'm gonna make myself available as needed, and like other people said, sometimes it could be, you know, 20 hours a week, other times it could be more. Since I'm a small business owner and it's, it's my company, I have that flexibility to go to the meetings, go to the different events, and I'm gonna make myself available. It's just like I've been at the last couple meetings, that, you know, I can take off and go there and get things done.
Thank you. Ms. Paul.
I think it can easily be a full-time or more than full-time position. I'm used to juggling many competing interests. I hope to be able to stay grounded dealing with teens and pre-teens while I'm being county commissioner. They keep your ego in check. And my principal, I teach in Frederick County, so I don't have a conflict here in Washington County, and my principal and school system is very supportive. Thank you.
I have an extremely flexible schedule, I have a team that helps support me, I'm easy to find, you can look in the papers, there's a for-sale sign on the street, my cell number's there, I have no plans on changing my cell number, so full-time when needed.
Thank you. All right, we made it. The next question, in recent years, Washington County's economy seems to be growing more slowly than in surrounding jurisdictions. In your opinion, what is holding the county back, and what do you propose to improve our economy? Mr. McKinley.
Yes, you know, statistics in the paper recently show that our unemployment rate is quite low, however, there were 41 percent of our households living from paycheck to paycheck. I think we're doing a lot of things good with economic development, I think that the new structure has some potential, but I think in the long run, this is a case of how we do something is more important than what we do. I honestly believe that a county, in particular, as business opportunities come along, need not treat these people as adversaries. They need to be treated as partners, they need to be treated as though they're welcome and that they're customers. So one of the things I would do is try to upgrade the attitude that we have when businesses come to town. In addition, I would support this new structure, hoping that this hybrid, or whatever you want to call it, with an addition of a powerful leader, new leader, would really bring Washington County to where it ought to be with economic development and growth.
Thank you. Mr. Baker.
Well, we have a lot of great things going on in Washington County in economic development. As Mr. McKinley pointed out, our unemployment rate is hovering around the 4 percent range. I think in the last couple of years, one of the great things that's happened to Washington County is the ability for the commissioners and all of the economic partners working together. I think under the leadership of Paul Frye, I saw him here earlier, Jim Kurtzwell, I said they, they've done an extremely awesome job pulling all of the partners together, getting us to work together. We have our new Economic Development Coalition, and the best thing that commissioners can do is take their advice, do the best we can with the resources needed and get out of their way. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Paul.
I'm eager to see how the new EDC takes shape, and I think it has a lot of great potential. I think business needs to be driven by private sector, but the county government can play an important role in trying to facilitate that. We need county leadership that's aggressively pursuing opportunities, trying to pave the way...
way rather than impede any kind of business opportunities. And I really would like to see us also actively pursuing better-paying jobs so that we have residents who aren't living paycheck to paycheck. And the more disposable income people have, the better it is for our economy here locally as a whole.
Thank you. The next question. How do you intend to bolster our Business Development Department as we compete directly against strong neighboring economic development organizations? Mr. Kiefer.
So when I first joined the commission, I was invited to attend some of our Economic Development Committee meetings, and I was amazed that in that room of people, they collectively represented 9,000 Washington County employees. So the businesses that they owned or that they managed or that they represented on our commission, 9,000 employees. They know what it takes to create a job, to maintain a job, to grow a job, and to grow skills among their employers, employees. I think we need to listen to them a little more. I don't think it's government that always has the best answers or the answer at all. I think it's the private sector, and I think when we give our private sector an opportunity to do what they do best, I think the county will benefit in the long run.
Thank you. Ms. Brightman.
So I think if there was one theme for the last four years in this county, it would be missed opportunities. Whether it's Cascade, where you, the county missed several opportunities, hopefully we'll have potential buyers coming back to that arena. The missed opportunities downtown and the missed opportunities with Mount Etna. It seems to be everything is in slow motion. I tend to have a bias for action, and I think it's important that we somehow build this energy, leadership, and vision that we can get out of our own way and actually move forward into the 21st century.
Thank you. Mr. Maynes Schmidt.
I think the first, the new EDC, I think we need to get behind that. I like the structure of it. I don't believe that it's a perfect form. It's a great step in the right direction. I would ask the current Board of County Commissioners not to vote on anything on the bylaws or constitution or the actual formation of that until the new board gets in place in a month, so that the new board, once we're there, we can actually develop this and grow with it because we're going to be the ones that are going to have to help move it for the next four years. But it's definitely a step in the right direction, and I want to get behind that so that we can see the growth and improve it a little bit in Washington County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question is, name one thing you would do personally to promote economic development in Washington County. Mr. Beal.
I think for me personally would be making sure that when the Economic Development Commission gets up and running fully, it has to have a true leader at the top of it, someone who can coordinate, can manage, can direct resources. We really haven't had that before, so having someone in charge that can manage what's going on, bring all the disparate groups together to make sure that we're all focused on the same goal. We shouldn't confuse strategy and tactics. We have to have a strategy first, then we can find the tactics to execute it. So that would be one thing that I'd be focused on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Klein.
Repeat the question. I thought you answered.
Name one thing you would do personally to promote economic development in Washington County.
Thank you. I've done this in the past. It's getting out of the office. It's going out amongst existing businesses, listening to their concerns. How can you help them grow? How do you recruit new business? One time I had a sales manager tell me, if you're in this office, you're not making me money. And I guess what he meant was he made commission off me, but if you're not out there going out greeting people, making new contacts, going across the river, going across the Mason-Dixon Line, trying to recruit businesses back to Washington County with veteran incentives to lure them here, to show them that they're able to have a better cooperative business atmosphere here. But the key to that is maybe to reinstate the business, the business visit that many of the commissioners were doing at once upon a time. You develop leads that you never expect. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner.
I think the very first thing is we have to nurture the businesses and keep the businesses that are already here. I've been a business owner for, I don't know, 25, 30 years, and I've never had anybody approach me about what they could do for me or how they could help me. And, you know, during the height of recession, we had a 13% unemployment rate, and we were fourth in the state in foreclosures. We just can't let that happen again, and I think it starts with business and some other things that I'm sure you're going to get to.
Thank you. Next question is, what do you see as our county's economic strengths, and how would you better leverage that to promote growth specifically? Ms. Bright.
I'm not sure everyone realizes that agriculture is the number-one economic driver in the state of Maryland as well as in Washington County. And I know that as my tenure on the Board of Ed, I really made every effort to try to include the idea of career tech, of ag tech, and the expansion of that entire program at the school system. I do know that the ag community, or a word, agriculture was added to the Economic Development Coalition. I have no idea how that will be defined going forward, but since it is the major economic driver, I think we need to bring that forward and be more creative and innovative with that economic driver.
Thank you. Mr. Baker.
Okay, would you repeat that question again?
Certainly. What do you see as our county's economic strengths, and how would you better leverage them to promote growth specifically?
Well, I think when you talk about economic growth, I think you have to look at the, many of the businesses that want to come into Washington County, and many of our businesses that want to locate in Washington County, they do their own research to see what workforce that we have available. So I think it's imperative that our local county public school superintendent, the president of the college, they work together. They make sure that they can put their minds together and come up with ways of having our workforce prepared for the businesses that want to come to Washington County.
Thank you. Next question. If Washington County ended up on the shortlist of a major employer locating here, say Amazon, what incentives would you propose to offer them? Mr. Forrest.
Well, I suppose if the sale of Fort Ritchie had gone through, we could use some of that money as an incentive, but really to be able to market and sell what we have here, and it kind of goes on to the previous question, is location. I mean, we are at the intersection of two major highways. Affordability here is much better than the metro area, even though we're only an hour or so outside of DC or Baltimore. We have the second-largest airport runway in the state of Maryland, so the potential here to bring business in, I think, is unmatched in the state. It's just going to take strong leadership, not only from local government, but someone who's going to take the helm of the EDC and really run with what we have here already and how we can make things better for employment.
Thank you. Mr. Maynes Schmidt.
I think the, every business that's coming in, a major employer, if they came on in, it's going to depend on what incentives they need or what would change. So each individual company that came in, I'm not going to say that this would be the one answer because we need to make sure it's customized to the business that's there. Bringing in Amazon, like you said earlier, if that's a distribution warehouse, it's a completely different incentive than if we brought in another manufacturing company. So we have to look at what that company is and tailor the incentives to them. Hopefully, with the new structure of the EDC that's coming out, that's what their job is going to be in bringing all of those people together. And then you have a leader and you have those people together. We can then work with them, work with the business and the county commissioners together so that we can actually get the incentive that's proper to bring in that specific company. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next question is another rapid-fire question. It was late breaking. Everyone, again, will get to answer. Twenty seconds. So the question is, given the increasing elderly population in the county, as baby boomers age and retire, and specifically the financial unsustainability of the current Commission on Aging 50-plus programming, do you support an increase in funding for the Commission on Aging? We'll begin with Mr. Forrest and go down the line.
So I would, but in doing so, it'd have to be by expanding the tax base. Obviously, money has to come from somewhere. I think increasing taxes is really a disincentive to economic development. I think the best way to have additional revenue to fund programs such as the Commission on Aging and education and all the others are to increase the tax base.
Thank you. Mr. Kiefer.
Absolutely. I think citizens that have worked their entire lives in Washington County deserve a little extra respect when they age into older life, and the Commission on Aging does a great job. A couple of years ago, two years ago, I believe, it was recommended by our staff to decrease funding to the Commission on Aging, and I was able to persuade level funding, at least it wasn't an increase, but it wasn't a cut.
Thank you. Mr. McKinley.
As one of that group you're talking about, I'd probably lean towards additional funding, provided funding was there. But I would also have some strings attached to that. One of the things, issues that I have, not an issue, but one of the things that I would like to see happen with the elderly and the aging is that our services be decentralized a little bit away from the Hagerstown area and our senior center. So funding, yes, with strings.
Mr. Maynes Schmidt.
I think as everyone's going to say, I definitely agree with increasing the funding, but it's all going to be within means. If we have the budget to maintain it and what are our priorities, that's definitely going to be one of the priorities, but it's, I can't say I'm going to overfund it.
Thank you. Ms. Paul.
And I agree, yes. I would support increasing funding, but I think there's a couple of other things we can be doing, looking at the fee structure. We don't want anyone prevented from using it, but are the fees there that help support and create a fundraising? If you look at the Humane Society, which gets some funding, they do a lot of creative fundraising. So how can we help support the Commission on Aging to do that?
Thank you. Mr. Wagner.
As a commissioner, I'd be tasked with the control and the management of the citizens' money. The answer to that question for me is yes, absolutely. I think in every budget, everybody in here probably has a budget, every budget has a little bit of fluff in it. There's room to make some, rob Peter to pay Paul, for lack of better terms, but also say we have to do it within our means. We can't raise taxes to make that happen.
Thank you. Mr. Baker.
Yes. One program in particular that they're struggling to meet the need of is the Meals on Wheels. That's an outstanding program where they go out and they meet our seniors and the people that need some help with food, medicines, and so forth. So yes, and I'd also, Mr. McKinley's a big part of the reason the senior center's outstanding and where it is today. He was a big advocate of that location.
Mr. Beal.
Well, like the last time I ran, I'm not the youngest candidate on the stage. That's Wayne Kiefer right now, but for the aging question, I would focus on maintaining the budget where it is, where possible. Of course, I would increase it through my vote, but of course, all budgetary constraints have to be in play with that, so that's my, I would definitely be saying a yes.
Thank you. Ms. Brightman.
Commissioners have flat-funded the Commission on Aging for three years, not just one year, and the population has continued to expand and grow. We have people going hungry right now in this county and that demographics, and I think we need to do what we can to move that forward. I would think grant writing would be a way to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Klein.
There are many crucial needs in Washington County that might have, may, will have a higher priority, public safety, infrastructure, and public safety and our education. Certain programs within the Commission of Aging, such as the Meals on Wheels, probably does need an increase, and that would, something we'd have to look at with budgetary concerns. And to sum up, I was one of the biggest supporters of that senior center to be built.
Thank you.
It's a pride to this community.
All right. That was everyone. Next question. What skills do you possess that will allow you to properly manage the county's roughly $450 million budget? Mr. Kiefer.
I think, I am the youngest candidate. Thank you for pointing that out, and, but much of my short life has been devoted to not just education, but finance as well. I have degrees from Hagerstown Community College, all locally, Hagerstown Community College, Frostburg at Hagerstown, USMH, a bachelor's and a master's degree in business. I understand business. I worked in commercial banking. From the finance side, I understand how a balance sheet and an income statement works. I've worked with consumers and customers as a lender, so I know the struggles faced by some of the members of our community when it comes to financial resources. I also teach business on a part-time basis at Frostburg, USMH here in Hagerstown, so I get to share that passion with my students, adult learners, and so I think I'm well-versed in what it takes to run financially a county.
Thank you. Mr. McKinley.
Yes, I think probably two life experiences I've had have prepared me well for dealing with the budget. My last position with the Board of Education was Executive Director, and the four things that I dealt with there, one of those was the budget. I also had buses, I had buildings, and I think we called it the beans, four Bs, it was a food service. But overseeing the budget, $180 million budget at that time for six years, I believe, prepared me well. And of course, I've also spent four years as a county commissioner previously, dealing with the budget, believing that probably dealing with the budget is the bottom-line, most important responsibility we have because everything we do comes back to that budget.
Thank you. Next question. Many of you shared suggestions to promote economic growth and attract a major employer, some of which would require public investment. Considering the county has not raised taxes in the past 17 years, is a tax increase justified or necessary? Mr. Klein.
First and foremost, you should grow your tax base and increase the revenue by placing in, and government getting out of the way and placing regulations off to the side and not, let me say that again, by eliminating regulations that impede the speed of business. You've heard something that we don't move fast enough. We live in a quad-state area, 16 counties. We're constantly in competitive disadvantage to other states and counties, having infrastructure from broadband to electric to water, sewer, roads in place. We need to be aggressive, have those type of incentives in place to encourage people that Washington County is open for business. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maynes Schmidt.
The answer's no. I don't think we need to raise taxes, as we've seen in the last four years. Our revenue has grown, and so our budget has grown. We do have the resources, just needs to be done properly, used properly, so that we can, we can bring these companies in to continue growing. You constantly hear about growing the base. We have to actually do that. We've, Fort Ritchie has taken a long time. We've had other areas where we've had opportunities to grow the base, and we haven't really done that. So the answer is no, we don't need to raise taxes, we just need to take what's available and go from there. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Forrest.
I would say no. Again, my position has been to grow the tax base in order to provide incentives. We do have the location that I mentioned that I think is one of the best locations, and there are infrastructures available here to support that. You know, when you talk about raising taxes, that would be when you get into a public service-type thing with education or firing EMS, when you get to a point where you're at a, to prevent a crisis. I don't think people are in favor of paying taxes to bring businesses in, but we also need to find a way within the existing budget to support that.
Thank you. This just in, I was mispronouncing Mr. Bell's name the whole time. People butcher my name all the time, so. Anyone else I'm mispronouncing your name, please let me know. Next question. In the event of a projected budget shortfall and without the ability to increase revenue, what spending would you cut first and why? Mr. Bell.
Very good. Well, I think if you look at the budget, I believe it's around 75% of it is going to be education and public safety. So what can you find in the other 25%? You know, some of the things you think about, the parks, you think about, you know, the county commuter, things of that nature, but, you know, those are important things for the community. But the golf course, for example, I believe it costs around one and a half million dollars a year to operate. It's supposed to be operated with user fees, but I'm pretty sure we're not making a profit off the Black Rock Golf Course. So trying to find things in the budget that can be minimized without causing an issue[1750.51] So, trying to find things in the budget that can be minimized without causing a, an issue with public safety, educational spending of that nature, so you have to find every penny you can, that's my view.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner.
Well, there's, I would start with the things I couldn't cut. I couldn't cut education, I couldn't cut public safety, there's, I could go on and on, without having a budget in front of me, seeing that under 25%, you know, it would be hard to pinpoint. I don't, I think there's a better way than cutting somebody's budget, I think it's, I mean, we have a lot of property in Washington County, I haven't investigated it yet, but maybe we use that property for incentives and to sell it all, make some money, you know, we're not in the property business, you know, we use it to get businesses here.
It's not pronounced Wagner, right? Next question is, what would you do with the money if we had a budget surplus? Mr. Klein.
What would I do with money if we had a budget surplus?
As a Commissioner.
And you're mispronouncing it's Klein, but the C, not a K when you pronounce it. Budget surplus should be carefully weighed where you can do the most with the least amount of budget that you're talking about, surplus. To install a legacy program would be fruitless, because you'd have to come up with that money continuous year after year after year, you'd have to look at specific programs, maybe Meals on Wheels, there's an addition, but then if you support that program, is that a forever program? So, you'd have to carefully weigh where you can make the most with the limited amount of budget surplus that you had, to pave one mile road is $750,000. If you have a budget surplus of $3 million, would it be better to look at other individual programs like funding the fleet replacement program for our volunteer fire companies? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baker.
Well, the first thing I'd do is, I'd wanna put a meeting together with our county commissioners, our staff, and all of the entities that we help fund, and come up with ways that, as a group, to figure out how to best utilize the money. But the first thing that comes to my mind's our educational institutions, when you look around the county and all of the needs that they have, and we've, you know, we've moved them out further and further consistently over the years with all the repairs and the renovations that are needed on our schools, so for me, I would have to look at the schools, our school, school system first. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Paul.
It'd be awesome to have a surplus, there's so many things that have needs, so I think taking a look at how much the surplus is and then prioritizing, it would obviously need to be things that are a one-time expense, whether they be public safety or in education, the Commission on Aging that we were just talking about, infrastructure, I think there's a lot of things that would benefit from a one-time infusion, and so, again, seeing how much that pot of money is, and then looking at, okay, how can we divvy that up to get the most bang for the buck for that one-time infusion?
Thank you. Next question. Fort Ritchie, Cascade Town Center, whatever we're calling it. Given the recent failure of the planned sale to ESOC Holdings, the appearance of new interested bidders, and the sometimes rocky relationship with JGBLI, how should the county proceed with the redevelopment project while maintaining its obligations to all partners? Mr. McKinley.
I believe the first thing I would do, would try to get the Korean firm back to the table. I believe, I mentioned earlier, that we need to treat our partners as partners, not as antagonists or whatever, but I, I would try very hard to get them back to the table, hoping that there was a chance, that with a different attitude on our part, and a different attitude of cooperation, that that could be still a big possibility for Washington County. I think that's probably what's needed, and that's the direction I would go in. I would try to create a partnership and not an adverse relationship.
Thank you. Mr. Kiefer.
Well, I think many of you may have read the news this morning and saw that there's the opportunity that we had last week, while it may not be there at the present, there might be a new opportunity coming forward, I would be cautiously optimistic about that. We should work with our partners, including JGBLI and our newly formed Economic Development Coalition going forward. I think our EDC should have been brought in from the beginning, again, they employ 9,000 people, they know what it takes to build an economy, really, and I think we need to bring more of that insight into the conversation as well. So, I think, I think there's reason to be optimistic, so.
Thank you. Mr. Forrest.
It's encouraging to me that there's some competition in the process now with a Maryland investor who has shown interest. I do believe that it should, I agree with Mr. Kiefer, that the newly formed EDC, or when it's rolled out, should take over control of that project, and as far as redevelopment and the sale of the property.
Thank you. Another rapid-fire question, this time we're gonna start with Mr. Wagner and move our way down this way. The question is, who are your biggest donors? Mr. Wagner.
It's usually me, I'm my biggest donor. I've loaned a campaign, a lot more money anybody's given me. Friends, there's no, there's friends that own a business, like Dave Ryder's a friend of mine, I graduated with him, he gave me a thousand bucks. So, most of it is friends, raffle tickets, picnics, and me.
Ms. Paul.
Similarly, I don't have like one big donor, darn. I've gotten a lot of small donations, and I'm really proud of that, it's been widespread, it's a lot of women, it's been bipartisan, I have people like Dorian Ips, as well as Democrats and independents, and so it's been pretty broad-based.
Thank you. Mr. Meinl Schmidt.
Most of my donors have either come from, larger donors come from local businesses, or other people that I've served on boards with, so people that have known me and worked with me, they've, they've been good donors to me, and then also have a large portion of those $25 and $50 donors, so, thank you.
Thank you.
The largest single donations that I've received have been from my sister and brother-in-law, and from myself. Now, there have been a number of other smaller donations come in from friends and other people that I've known for ever in Washington County.
Thank you. Mr. Kiefer.
I am also probably my largest donor as well, I've put in some money, because I believe that if I'm asking people for money, I need to pony up some bucks as well, so they can see that I do have a commitment in it. Family members have contributed to my campaign as well, I did have one business in Hancock where I live, who the owner is very fond of me and offered to help me out with a, an event for free.
Mr. Forrest.
I've received donations from David Trone, who's a sixth district congressional, let me try that again, CD six congressional candidate, also from the Democratic Central Committee, and my kids, who are now professionals, and it's kinda payback, because I was kinda milking it out of them. Let's see, and a lot, probably a third for myself.
Thank you. Mr. Klein.
I have strong support from the business community with donations, but one of the most things I'm proud of is my annual picnic, at $25 per person. To this day, I still have, excuse me, about 20 core people who've been with me since 2009, 2010, to help support my campaign, and not just donation of time, but of money, not of money, but of their time.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Breitman.
The same combination, family, friends, business associate, local businesses, I think one of the, the best fundraising events I've done so far is the one at Mike's Tavern, which was a really well-attended and a good mix of bipartisan lifelong Republicans, lifelong Democrats.
Thank you. Ms. Bell.
Well, myself is the largest donor to my campaign. I do have a lot of leftover signs and material from the last time I ran, so that's a help, not having to spend that money on that, and friends and family. I don't accept PAC money or any special interest money, so that's, that's where I get my money from.
Thank you. Mr. Baker.
For myself, just local friends, I just mail out some letters, and occasionally I get a check in the mail, and we deposit it. I think the last report I'd raised about $1,600, $1,800, and hopefully, the next report might show $2,500, so I just get out to work, meet the people, and do the best I can with what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next question. What influence does the agricultural industry have on economic and workforce development in Washington County, and what role does county government play in supporting this vital part of our local economy? Mr. Kiefer.
So, agriculture is a, is a very important part of our local economy. I sometimes joke that doesn't matter if my neighbor drives a car made in Asia, or if my television's made in Korea, but I think it's important that the food that we eat is produced locally. Agriculture also provides a tourism opportunity in Washington County. We launched several months ago with the assistance of our business development and our ag marketing director, an ag tourism app, which has been very successful, and has been downloaded several times by people in neighboring metropolitan areas, so we can view ag as a tourism opportunity in our county.
Thank you. Mr. McKinley.
Yes, ag is the biggest business that we have in Washington County, as I understand, with well over 1,000 farms, and Leslie Hart can probably correct that number, I think it's actually more than that. But as far as the county's support of farms, I think the county, the county supports the farms at quite an extensive, to quite an extensive level. We do have a, Leslie Hart as the county coordinator for agriculture, we support the ag center, the county supports ag in many ways, realizing, again, it's the biggest thing we have going, and very vital to all of us, obviously.
Thank you. Ms. Breitman, you get to elaborate.
So, again, there's so many different ways to approach this, I think the one item that I would stress today is the importance of collaboration with our congressional delegation. Very soon after this election, they're going to be looking at the revision of NAFTA, the Mexican and Canadian markets, and certainly looking at the tariff issues with China. A farmer without a market is a gardener. We have to have markets for our local ag industry and statewide, and the best way to do that is to, to get some good people in Congress who understand and respect ag, and be able to work around those tariff and issues with markets, especially the dairy industry here locally. We could do some local safeguards and safety nets for them.
Thank you. The next question is, based on your knowledge of past decisions by the Board of County Commissioners, highlight for us a decision that you would make, you would have made or will make differently, and tell us why. Ms. Paul.
The first one that comes to mind is the handling of the sexual harassment claim. I think, number one, an investigation should have been promptly done, I don't think the HR director should have met in her car with the person filing the complaint, I think any of those complaints need to be taken seriously, and respect all the parties involved. I think we need to have a third-party ethics board that investigates those, maybe with a similar structure to the Salary Commission, which is a group of people appointed by different community organizations, so they have no stake, they're not appointed by the county commissioners. I don't think it's appropriate that now someone who wants to make a claim or complaint has to go to the county attorney, his duty is to the county, so I think there's a number of things relating to staff feeling like they have an appropriate avenue that isn't currently in place.
Thank you. Mr. Bell.
I would concur wholeheartedly with what Ms. Paul said, if you look at the reports that were released on a party line 3-2 vote in July, they paint a picture of things that were, that were not necessarily true in the public eye. If we look at the entire investigation, it's been checkered by bias, it's been checkered by people making their own decisions behind closed doors, we need to make sure that everything is out in the public eye. It costs $97,000 to have those reports completed, this, this public deserves to know everything that went on from October 2016 through basically July 1st, 2017. So, having a clear, transparent process has to happen, and I'm fairly certain if people read those reports, they will find a different view than what they have read in the press. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question is, considering that public education funding is approximately half of the county's budget, as Commissioner, what are you willing to support in order to ensure that our young people have the education and training necessary to be successful in today's global economy? Mr. Baker.
Well, as a county commissioner for the last 12 years, I can sit here and honestly say I've supported education to the maximum amounts that the commissioners have supported. I've always been on the forefront of supporting education, will always continue to do that. I know I'm sitting here where I'm at today because of education, you're sitting where you're at because of education, and we all know, the better the, the better the education, the better the job, the better the job, the more money you make. The more money you make, the more taxes you pay, so how can you not wanna support education to the best of your ability? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Klein.
As I mentioned earlier, two of my nieces were in mid-college while they were in high school, I would support expansion of that program. As I mentioned earlier, as I once called VOTE Tech in the early days, now Tech High, I'd like to see that program either expanded for 11th to 12th graders, or Tech High, Tech High from 9th through 12th. We're gonna see that it's imperative, probably, number one, is school safety, how do we fund resource officers or facilities strengthened to, for security for our kids? But one of the most important things is, my mom was a retired cafeteria worker. Teachers and that cafeteria works are the two best tools that any student, any child can have in an educational system. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Paul.
I think some of the ideas that have already been mentioned are really important. I think we have a lot of great things going with our education system, that if we look to expand them, or further support them, the middle college being one, Barbara Ingram, Tech High, I think there's great collaboration between a lot of our educational organizations, both private and our public system, and HCC, there's Purdue, I think they, they work well together, and so whatever the county government can do to help foster that, I think would be really important.
Thank you. Next. What additional steps, if any, should the county take to assure that staff, elected officials, and appointees are aware of and adhering to appropriate standards with respect to ethics, conflicts of interest, and transparency? Mr. Bell.
Well, one of the first things that I would like to do if elected is to have a complete revision of the ethics policy. My view is, no Commissioner or county employee should be allowed to have an inside track on county projects in the bidding process. To me, if we look at the situation with that, it's supposed to be, in the public view, there should be no bias or clear issue with, should this person or that company get a leg up on bidding? Frederick County has a very tough policy, they enacted it four years ago with the new county council, and I would love to see that here. Thank you.
Mr. Wagner.
Well, I have a sort of a take on this, as far as the, the ethics, I've already said publicly, I won't have any dealings with the county as a realtor, I was the one who sold, represented a client who sold it to Emergency Training Center, and so I'm gonna lose money in this thing, you know, and I'm willing to do that, is, I think we need our super, they have a civility training right now, that everybody, even I'm a chair of the animal control in Washington County, I even have to take that civility training. I think they need to step that up a little bit, I really do, I think there's, I don't think the guidelines of any of this is strong enough at this point, so.
Thank you. Mr. Meinl Schmidt.
Can you repeat the entire question?
Certainly. What additional steps, if any, should the county take to assure that staff, elected officials, and appointees are aware of and adhering to appropriate standards with respect to ethics, conflicts of interest, and transparency?
It really does come down to training, just making sure everyone is aware of it. I've said early in other forums about, and what Elizabeth alluded to, is having the Ethics Commission not be just appointees of the county commissioners, so that I do think it should be an ad hoc committee that's appointing these members, so that the people watching over the county commissioners aren't the people that we appointed. I think that's a huge step of it, but it really does come down to training and making sure that everybody is aware, so it has to become mandatory training, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next question. What are your primary public safety concerns, and how are you going to address and fund them? In particular, what are your solutions to the struggles of our fire and rescue system? Ms. Breitman.
So, I think most people are aware that there was a recent report based on some recommendations for fire and rescue, and I think before we talk about funding fire and rescue, we need to look at an efficient 21st century model. This county has a tradition of volunteerism, and that tradition has saved our county millions of dollars and lives and property over the many years. It's not a model that's going to take us forward, so we need to look at a, a hybrid, a more efficient way, but still honoring the volunteers and building that as well. And I think we need to have more parity with our sheriff's department and our deputies there. I know there was a salary report done recently that pointed out that Washington County is far behind many of our contiguous counties.
Thank you. Mr. Baker.
Repeat that question again.
Yep. What are your primary public safety concerns, and how are you going to address and fund them? In particular, what In particular, what are your solutions to the struggles of our fire and rescue system?
Well, as many of you know, I've been a solid advocate of our volunteer systems over the past twelve years. I believe in them. The volunteer system is the best system, I mean, it's just an outstanding group of volunteers in our community. One of the things that I think we really, really need to focus on, excuse me, is a coordinator advocate, volunteer coordinator advocate position, so that they can interact with our Emergency Services Director, be on the committee, be part of the process, so that they can get the information back to the volunteers, so that they can help the county commissioners be in a better position to move them forward.
Thank you. And Mr. Forrest.
Thank you. I think it's important that the leadership of the county evaluate the 200-plus-page document that was presented, get the stakeholders together, the paid firefighters, the volunteer leadership, and come up with a strategy agreed upon, how it's going to move forward, and then implement it in a stepwise, rational way, and make sure that funding is embedded in that plan. You can't, until you have the plan and what everybody agrees to do to move forward, it's hard to come up with a funding strategy. So come up with a plan, follow the plan, and find funding for it.
Thank you. All right, so that was all of our questions. There's one final question as a closing statement. We're nicely ahead of schedule, so there has been zero bloviating. So we're going to bump the time up for this response to, I'm going to do 90 seconds and just go crazy.
Ninety seconds.
So, we're going to, left to right, take 90 seconds, and tell us what motivates you to want this job and why we should vote for you. Mr. Baker.
Good morning again. My name is Terry Baker. What motivates me to do this job is I love serving the people. I love going out into the community, going into the stores and having citizens come up to me, ask me questions, ask me to do things for their roads, whatever. And then when I get the information, I provide it to staff. Staff does an outstanding job getting the responses back to the citizens and trying to correct and take care of their concern. Again, I just love to serve, want to continue serving, and I can consider myself a good listener. Again, a lot of my decisions are made by just listening to the citizens out there in the community that I talk with. And when I make a decision for our community, I almost always listen to the people from the communities where my vote's going to be affected. I want to listen to what they have to say for their community, and I almost always side with the citizens that my vote's going to affect. I don't live there, and they're going to live there for the rest of their life, so it's important for me to listen to the citizens. Thank you.
That was about 60 seconds. You had a whole 30 left.
Well, for me, my whole life's been involved in public service. I joined the Navy right out of high school at age seventeen. I'm an Iraq War veteran. Once I got out in 2004, I got into the public safety field at 911 Dispatch in Washington County, did nine years there. I'm in Frederick County now. For me, it's always about doing the right thing. We have had many issues over the last four years in county government. I think if I were to put a motion on the floor, that we have no confidence in this government. And I think if that motion were to be carried, that means a new government has to be put in its place. There's going to be five candidates elected. I hope I'm one of them. We have a lot of problems in this county that we can be solved, solve them very easily, if we all work together, do our best, and be honest with what we have to put forward to the people. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Brightman.
Thank you, and thanks to the chamber for holding this. It's an excellent opportunity to have a very good conversation. I know we've talked a lot about the new proposed Economic Development Coalition, and I think we're headed in the right direction, but I will share that you can have the best structure for economic development, you can have communities supporting that, coming together, but unless you have so much more as a good local government with leadership and vision, you're still not going to move forward. I mean, look at investors, developers, business, families wanting to move into this area and make a commitment. What's the first thing they're going to do? They're going to go online. They're going to read our newspapers. They're going to see the dysfunction of the last four years, and they're going to question the wisdom of coming to this county. So this is the first competitive commissioner race we've had since 2006. You do have an opportunity to make that change, and this is the time. We have early voting, we have our election on November 6th. You have a responsibility, if you want to see change, to go out there and actually get 20 more people to vote. When you leave here today, send out 20 texts or phone calls or emails. Get people to vote.
Thank you. Mr. Klein.
One of the main motivators of being a commissioner, being reelected for my third term, is establish teamwork amongst my colleagues at all levels, whether it's the Board of Ed, fellow commissioners, chamber, lobbying coalition, greater Hagerstown. I pride myself on my constituent service, being out amongst the people, hearing about those potholes or a permit regulation that they were awkward about how to undertake and solve that problem. I want people to know that government listens and care. One of the examples recently, one of the most prominent issues I'm hearing about now is flooding. My fourth-grade teacher, Connie Jamison, called me for help. I couldn't have been more proud that a former elementary teacher who knew my mom as a cafeteria worker called one of her students of X amount of decades ago for help, and staff responded. It was very rewarding to have her "thank you" on the phone. Today, more than ever, economic development and raising our revenues is the solution for the many funding wants and needs that we have: education, public safety, infrastructure, all of equal importance. And how do we, as commissioners, balance our sources of revenue to fully fund and meet their needs as we go into the future? I'm proud to say I'm from Williamsport, and I'm proud to say I'm from Washington County, and I'll be even more proud to say I'm reelected as county commissioner. I humbly thank you all for your support, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Forrest.
I'd like to thank the chamber for hosting this event. This is the last of three forums where all of us had had the opportunity to share our opinion and views for where Washington County should go. I look at it as if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. It's not my adage, but it's been around for a long time. When I stepped up and ran for the school board in 2000, people were like, "Why are you putting yourself out there?" I'm like, "Well, why not? If people have concerns," and I had concerns at the time, "it's your civic responsibility, my civic responsibility, to do something about it." I was proud of my 10 years of service on the school board. I think when I left, the school system was better, often not because of me, but because of my ability to work with a variety of different people, different opinions, and I can bring that type of leadership to the county government. People keep saying, "What's going on with the county?" I have the same question. So I'm putting myself out there once again. I'd appreciate your support. I'm not doing this for me. I want to make Washington County a better place for all of us, and the legacy is not for anyone sitting up here, but the legacy is that we have a strong, vibrant economy here and a good place to raise your family. So I would appreciate your support on November 6th.
Thank you. Mr. Kiefer.
Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and to Hager Hall here for hosting our event this morning. I sometimes joke that when I attended an early morning meeting somewhere in Washington County, I left in Hancock before the sun rose. The sun didn't rise this morning when I left Hancock, and it hadn't risen yet when I got here in Hagerstown either. A little over two years ago, I was appointed to a vacancy on the Board of County Commissioners, and it was an honor to be appointed, and I've tried very hard to make myself worthy of that position. In the first few weeks and months of my appointment, I went around to every county department that we had, visited with our division directors to learn more about what their job, what their role in county government details. I have an accounting background. I don't have an engineering background or an airport background, so I needed to learn a little bit about that. I also took an opportunity to spend about a day or maybe a half a day with each of our town managers. We have nine incorporated municipalities, our town mayors or our town managers. I spent time to learn what was important in their community. So I hope that I've proven myself to be, to take an earnest interest in Washington County government, to do my best. I make votes that I know are important and that are difficult, and I do my homework, I do my research to make sure that I can make the best possible decision for Washington County. I've been on the board now, like I said, for just over two years. I've seen some change on the board in the positive direction. It's been said before by a fellow candidate up here, the reports haven't been read enough that were released by the county. You have an opportunity, they're public. Read it. It's not covered enough. Read it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, chamber, for having us here today. I believe strongly that if one is blessed with good health, experience, ability, and a halfway sound mind, that you have an obligation, that we're a duty, to give back to your community, this community where I've lived most of my life. I can't build a wing on the hospital. I can't build a park out there for the kids and name it after myself, but I can give what I have, and that is my experience, my health, my sense of duty toward the county where I grew up. So I'm hoping that you will see things my way a little bit on November the 6th and cast a vote for Bill McKinley. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Meinl Schmitt.
Before we go into the question, there was a previous question about educational support, and I'd like to let everybody know, on the ballot, there's a question one about funding for education, about bringing the gambling money towards education, actually lockboxing. That is something that I hope everybody is in for, and I'd like to go out and spend my 90 seconds, but that's something that we can actually get more funding to our educational system. But that being said, why I'm running is, I'm a person that, I'm not going to complain about something unless I'm willing to try to fix it, and so that's my opportunity, is I've done it time and time before. If I see a problem, I want to step up and try my best to fix it. If it's on other nonprofits, if it's the board, I think we can do better. I believe everybody here is trying to do the best interest of the county, and I want to be one of those people. I've got kids in the school, you know, a magnet program at Williamsport Elementary, a magnet program in Western Heights, and I want to see the best for them. My wife's a teacher at Marshall Street, and I think that's another program. There's a lot of things. So I'm embedding this community. I moved my office downtown because I wanted to help see downtown Hagerstown improve. I'm that person. If you're not going, if I find a problem, I'm willing to try to fix it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Paul.
Thanks to all of you for being here this morning, and my apologies to whoever's behind this big speaker here that I haven't been able to see all morning. But I'm running because I believe in doing more than complaining, to speak up and step up. I, like many people, got tired of the negative headlines. I'm tired of the economic struggles where we do the same thing, get the same results, and then are disappointed by them. I'm tired of seeing the personal scandals. I believe in transparency in government. Closed session topics are dictated by Maryland sunshine laws. We need to follow those laws. I believe in ethical leadership and public service, and I am committed to doing that. I've tried to do that in a variety of ways throughout my life. It's not about earning the big bucks, which is why I'm a teacher. It's about how can I leave the world better? I think we need to be more proactive in any number of ways. We have so many incredible assets here in Washington County, the airport being one of them. It is a true jewel. Phil Rydenhour is leaving in two weeks. This is a retirement that's been planned for five years. It wasn't until midsummer that the current county commissioners started looking for a replacement. Hopefully, they voted yesterday to hire someone, but that person will have essentially no overlap, because Phil and Jeannie are going on vacation as soon as he retires. So we need to be more proactive. The same is true in fire and rescue. We've kicked the can and kicked the can until it's a crisis. So I believe in proactive, transparent government.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner.
Thanks, everybody, for being here. I'm vested in this community and this town. I'm married, I have three daughters, seven grandchildren. I grew up in Hagerstown, downtown. My dad, George Wagner, was a projectionist in the Maryland Colonial Theater for years. I grew up on that balcony down there, in the old days. I'm a veteran of the United States Coast Guard. Most of the time was spent on the Outer Banks in search and rescue. I've been vice chair of the Animal Control Board in Washington County for the last several years. If you think this is a harbor, that one's twice as hard, animal control. I think, you know, I approached this from the very beginning, and I said that, I think it's a Julie Green down there, I said, "This isn't rocket science. This is just a common sense job." You know, I've managed to build some pretty nice businesses, and I love the business I'm in now, and I'm a part of my life where I'm flexible, I'm part of my life I can serve. I was up for appointment a couple of years ago when Mr. Spong left, and we didn't know how that ended up. Wayne Kiefer got it. No hard feelings there, Wayne. But they said I was runner-up, but you know what that means also. So anyway, I'd appreciate your support, and we did avoid the grill in the room tonight. I know it wasn't business, but I firm believer drugs is a collapse of all communities, and it affects our business, it affects our workforce, so I think we really need to focus on that some, too. Thank you all.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone for being here, our candidates, and I'll hand it over to Paul.
Thank you. And let's give Aaron another great round of applause. He worked really hard, as I hope you can tell, coordinating the questions and the timing, so thank you for the work you're doing there. I hope we showed you he was unbiased, and we wanted to try to get the information, so thank you. And the only slip up was with the last name, it was like Petternets, but I didn't know either, so thank you for educating us. I do want to acknowledge the 11 candidates, 10 of whom are here. Competition is good, and so I'm glad to see that we have 11 people putting themselves out there. So thank you, first of all, for the incumbents for serving, and for the other candidates for running. We appreciate your time and efforts getting to this point. Let's give them another round of applause. Also like to acknowledge our chamber staff. If you had to get up early, they were here even earlier, so let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, Donna, Tim, Ashley. Hopefully Rod's out selling memberships, but he usually gets up early with us. I'd also like to thank John Williams, his team from Jamison Doors, give them a round of applause for hosting us and sponsoring us. And then after 5:00, Jim and Mike, they're recording this, this will be on our YouTube channel, so if you want to see more of this and get more information, that'll be posted here shortly. And lastly, I want to thank all of you for coming out. Again, our job is to educate you. It was mentioned that it is a competitive race this year. Educate yourself, educate the folks you interact with, and remember to vote and put the word out. So thank you. Have a good rest of the morning. The candidates may be here a little bit longer. Again, Patriot Federal Credit Union is a ribbon cutting if you want to go there across Emeritus, that's where we're headed, so have a good rest of the day. Thank you.